Hi, welcome to Queer View Mirror, a show about queer people, by queer people, for queer people and our allies. I am Dawn.
And I'm Scott. Today, we're going to be talking to the gentleman who took on the Surrey School Board in a million-dollar lawsuit.
Brave and daring is how I would describe him. But before we go to the interview, let me say this is Queer View Mirror coming at you.
Joining us today is James Chamberlain, who describes himself as an accidental activist. And here he is to describe himself in his own words. Welcome to our first live interview on Queer View Mirror, and we're super excited to have our guest, James Chamberlain, here today.
Yes, thanks to COVID being over temporarily, I don't know, I hope never comes back. Anyway, as Scott said, this is our first interview live on a set here in the wonderful Albany Valley, in the unceded territories of the Hupeche Set and the Tushab peoples. We are so happy to have with us today, Mr. James Chamberlain, who's going to be sharing with us his journey, his story, and his wonderful organization. But it will come in later part. So, James, thank you and welcome to the show, coming all the way from the nine row.
Thank you. It's great to be here.
Okay, called the driver, okay?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So let Scott start off with the first question.
Well, why don't you tell us a little bit about your background?
Uh, I, uh, was raised in Abbotsford, uh, in the 1970s, in a really, um, conservative community. Uh, our family didn't go to church, and, uh, we were shopped around to different churches to try to convert us as kids. And, uh, um, the, the neighbors didn't like me because I would question their, um, I would question their, uh, process for trying to bribe us to belong to their churches. And, uh, so they didn't like having a critical thinker, uh, in the neighborhood. So, we were a little bit like black sheep to some degree because we weren't churchgoers, but my parents were, um, very involved in the community, and so they had a good social standing, aside from the religious piece. But, um, I was, I was targeted as the school faggot or the school fairy from grade three to grade 12 in, uh, Surrey for three years, and then in Abbotsford for nine years. So, school was not a positive place for me. I was beaten up a lot at school, um, harassed, um, and, uh, so, when I, when I finished high school, uh, that day when I graduated was actually one of the happiest days of my childhood because I thought that I would never go back to school again. I didn't, I didn't have, uh, the thought that I would go to university, but, uh, my parents were definitive that my sister and I would go to university because none of our family had ever gone to university. So there was a lot of pressure on us to go to university. So I went to university, to UBC, and I was seventeen, and I was too young. I had never left the farm. I'd never been away from the farm for one night, and suddenly I was living in Vancouver. So I was freaked out by Vancouver. I hated Vancouver initially. And, uh, I would go home every weekend, uh, because the farm felt like the safe place. The city felt very, um, dangerous as a seventeen-year-old. And I failed my first year of university. Uh, I didn't, I only passed one course, I think. And then I went back to Abbotsford and, uh, went to Fraser Valley College, which is now the University of the Fraser Valley. And that was a lifeline for me to get out of Abbotsford, because I knew I couldn't stay in Abbotsford. When I, when I was eighteen, uh, at that time, your choice was get married and start having children within
At eighteen?
One or two years.
Well, it was the seventies.
Yeah. So, you started, the expectation was that you would get married and have children within one or two years. And everybody did that. And so, as a, a gay teen, I knew I couldn't have that kind of a life. I couldn't live, lead a, a double life and be a, you know, be someone I wasn't. So I had to leave the town. That was the only, only option for me. Plus, the years of harassment, everybody knew who the school fag was, right? So getting out of town was the safe thing to do. So, I was at the University of the Fraser Valley for one year, and then I went back to UBC. And, uh, started to do well because I was fearful of moving back to Abbotsford again, so I worked my
Fear is a good motivator.
I worked my ass off at school because I didn't want to go back. I never wanted to go back again. Back. I never wanted to go back again. Um, and so I got a degree in agriculture and worked in agriculture for six years.
Oh, okay.
Um, and, uh, got involved in teaching because I was teaching student practicums to second-year university students. They wanted to be veterinarians, and they needed practicum hours in, uh, with large animals. And most of them wanted to be dog and cat vets, and they knew nothing about large animals. So there was a dairy farm, uh, sheep farm, uh, a pig farm, and a chicken farm. And, uh, so I worked on the chicken farm and the pig farm. And, um, that's what got me interested in teaching was working with second-year university students. So I quit that job, and I went to work at the Vancouver Aquarium for a couple of years on school programs. And then, my husband and I both quit our jobs and started traveling around the world, and I applied for teaching, and I, and we left. And I thought, okay, in a year when I come back, if I get, if I get approved, I'll start my teaching courses. And if I don't, I'll figure out what I'm gonna do. And so we went away and came back, and when I came back, there was an envelope saying I was accepted to SFU. And so I started my teaching, uh, program, uh, in nineteen ninety, nineteen ninety-one. And so became a teacher a year later. Thirty years of career.
Okay, so that became your long-term career?
Yes, yes. I taught kindergarten to grade seven, uh, all the grades. But most years, I taught, I taught kindergarten for ten years in Surrey. And I taught grade three for many years. Uh, and I also worked for the Teachers' Union, the Provincial Teachers' Union, for four years. And one piece of my job there, it was in social justice programs. So one piece of my job was LGBTQ issues in schools. So I helped different school districts develop SOGI policies, before they were called SOGI policies. Uh, when I started there, there was one district that had a policy, and four years later, there were twenty-two districts out of sixty that had policies. So I helped, kind of, working with school trustees, teachers, students, politicians, to get people on board to the idea that LGBTQ issues needed to be dealt within schools. And I also worked for an organization called Gay and Lesbian Educators of B.C., which later became Pride Education Network, and I was with that organization for twenty-five years.
So it seems teaching has been your, sort of like your main course?
Yeah, yeah. It was my main course because I wanted school to be better for queer kids than it had been for me. That was my driving force. That's what, that's why I was so involved in LGBTQ activism in schools. Um, and the teacher union had a magazine that they put out, and, and when it, in nineteen ninety-two, I wrote an article about being a substitute teacher and being out and being gay and what that was like. And I didn't publish my name. They, it was the only article at that time that they had ever published that didn't have someone's name attached to it. And that was the first story of, uh, an out gay teacher that they had ever published. And I didn't attach my name to it because I was trying to get a job, a permanent job.
Well, that brings me to my next question, though. So as an openly gay teacher, how was that for you? What was your experience like in the beginning?
In the beginning, uh, people were, some, some colleagues were uncomfortable. Parents were actually fine, no matter what school I worked in, because they built a relationship with you because of their child. Some of the teachers, uh, had major issues with it, and usually the teachers that, the teachers that had the biggest issue with it were teachers who were fundamentalist Christian. And they were very uncomfortable with having a gay teacher on staff. In one school district, one principal hauled me into her office and said, "You need to stop talking about your husband in the staff room because it's making people uncomfortable."
Really?
And I'm like, uh, "What do you mean?" And she's like, "You know, when you're talking about things you're doing on the weekend, it's making people uncomfortable. So instead of saying 'we' and, you know, Jean-Marie and I, you need to just use 'I.' You know, make it, make it sound like you're single."
Oh, my goodness.
So I
What was this in Surrey or Vancouver?
This was in Richmond, my first school district in Richmond.
And it was a public school district?
It was a public school, yes. And so I said, you know, if, "I don't understand why you're talking to me. If someone's uncomfortable with me, they need to be talking to me face to face. This isn't your issue." And then she said, "Well," and she closed the door, and she said, "Well, I need you to know that I'm lesbian. And, uh, not many people in this district know. And, uh, I'm telling you this because this is a very conservative district and, you know, to protect yourself." And I said, "I don't need to protect myself." I said, and she started to tell me about how she would come to the school and her partner would drop her off blocks away, and she would walk to the school so they would never be seen together. And I said, "If you have issues with your own personal relationship and people finding out, that's your stuff."
Exactly.
I said, "I don't have any stuff around that." I said, "I don't care if people know I'm gay or not. It's a non-issue for me. So you can't impose your stuff onto me." I said, "That's not okay." And I'm gonna keep talking about Jean-Marie, just like other teachers talk about their partners in the staff room. So, um, so that was, that was my first year, second year of teaching.
Well, earlier you were sharing that you were applying to teach in Vancouver and you were accepted and so
That was Richmond. That was in Richmond. I was applying in Richmond, and I was getting short-term contracts, like working thirty days or forty days in a school because of someone being on sick leave. But I could never get a permanent job. And I was out in those three years in Richmond as, uh, as a substitute teacher, working at different schools. And so then I switched to Surrey, um, because people kept saying, "There's lots of jobs in Surrey. Go to Surrey." And I was like, "I don't think I want to drive that far." But eventually, you know, you have to pay bills and stuff, and so I was like, "Okay, I'll apply to Surrey." So I started in Surrey in October, uh, and I was the fourth kindergarten teacher in that classroom in eight weeks.
Yeah, tell us a story again. It's quite interesting.
So the, the, the principal said, she hired me on the spot, and she said, "I just want you to know you're walking into a hornet's nest."
Okay, wow.
Okay, what does that mean? And she said, "These parents are very angry. And there's been three other kindergarten teachers that have all crashed and burned in the last eight weeks, and you are the fourth one. And you need to make this work." And I said, "Okay."
But according to your story, were only eight children involved, or there were more than eight?
No, no.
In your kindergarten class?
That was a full class of twenty, twenty-two kids. Um, so, uh, anyways, uh, she said, "You, you have a choice. You can let the parent, the parents are highly anxious. You have a choice. You can let the parents in from day one, or you can keep them out for a month. And of course, you're gonna need to let them in eventually to volunteer and, you know, be in the room. But you, I, you can keep them out for a month until you feel comfortable, and then start to let them in." And I said, "No, no, they can come in from day one. That's totally fine." So, the first day teaching there, I had eight moms sitting in the back of the room, and they stayed there the entire year.
Eight moms, okay.
Eight moms. So I said, you know, as I built relationships with them, I said, "Oh, great, you're here. Oh, we have so much work for you to do. Can you cut this out? Can you glue this? Can you, you know, print these name tags for the kids, blah, blah, blah?" So I put them to work. And, uh, consequently, those moms became my strongest allies because they saw me teach every day. And then fast forward a year later, uh, when I started, I was teaching about families. Um, I wanted to teach about same-sex families, and I started using, um, a book called One Dad, Two Dads, Brown Dad, Blue Dads. And I read it in my classroom. Uh, I didn't know books had to be approved or any of that, right? I was just a young teacher. And, uh, I gave my school principal a list of the books that I was using, and she's like, "What the, what's this book about?" And I'm like, "It's kind of Dr. Seuss kind of style book, rhyming book about two dads, families with two dads." And she said, "Oh, this is a really conservative school district. You're gonna have a hard time here. Like, you can't use these books." And I'm like, "What do I do then to be able to use them? Because I need to teach about all kinds of families. I can't, you know, not teach about same-sex families, or single-parent families, or blended families. I have to teach about all families. That's part of the curriculum." And she's like, "Well, you have to get those books approved then." And I said, "Okay, what do I do?" She says, "You have to submit them to the school board, but you're probably gonna experience some harassment and, um, negative consequences as a result of it." And in the back of my mind, I was like, "Okay, well, I was called school fag and school fairy for nine years as a teenager. There's nothing they can do to me as an adult that's gonna faze me. I've heard it all and experienced it all." So, I said, "Okay, well, then I'm gonna put them forward for district approval." And that began, uh, seven years of
Now we go to the next part of your story, okay?
Seven years of, uh, litigation and, um, heated, heated school board meetings and picketing and all sorts of things that happened to me. None of it in my school. Always outside my school or at the school board offices. When I would go to school board meetings, I'd have to walk through, like, throngs of picketers that were like waving sa- signs and, you know, yelling homophobic stuff at me.
Really? You're brave.
And, but I'd, I'd experienced it as a teenager. I knew there was nothing they could do or say to me that I hadn't already heard before. Um, and I knew it was the right thing to do as a teacher. And I wasn't going back to the seventies. I wasn't going back to being in the closet. Um, and they just had to deal with me, right? So, um, so yeah, it, uh, I read the book, uh, One Dad, Two Dads, Brown Dad, Blue Dads, because of
I'm curious of all of a sudden, like, what is a blue dad? Is he, like?
You're a blue dad. Look at you.
Yeah, I know. Blue is my favorite color. That's why
And you're a dad.
Basically, a dad who's blue. Oh, plus blue skin. So you're not a blue dad.
Yeah, what's blue skin? What ethnicity is that?
It's a children's book, right?
Or royal blood? Like, blue-blooded?
Think of, think of Green Eggs and Ham. Same idea, except it's talking about two same-sex parents.
A brown dad, I understand. Blue dad, it just
It rhymed.
Ah, okay.
Yeah. It's like one fish, two fish, red fish, blue fish. It's a Dr. Seuss story.
Reference to any ethnicity or something?
No, no.
Okay.
No, no. It's just a fun, a fun, a fun whimsical rhyming book, basically. And I read it because Zachary was in my classroom, and Zachary was not from a same-sex family, but he had two moms. And he would say to the other kindergarten kids, "I have a real mom and I have a birth mom." The kindergarten kids were like, "What? What's that?" This was nineteen, uh, this is nineteen ninety-seven, so people didn't even talk about single-parent families in that part of Surrey back then. Um, uh, and in the school that I taught in, there were four hundred kids, and there were only two families of color. So it was basically like Whiteyville, right? They were, they had not experienced much of anything. So, uh, so I read the book to make Zachary feel more comfortable in the classroom. And for the other kids to realize that families could have more than one mom or a dad. And I would, and I, and I played up the rhyming and the whimsical nature of the book, and I said to the kids, "Could a family really have two dads? What do you think?" And the kids are like, "Ooh, I don't know, I don't know." And I'm like, you know, so I, I was playing with their minds a little bit, creating cognitive, cognitive dissonance. So they would have to start thinking about something they might not have thought of before. And so, um, the school trustees got all worked up about LGBTQ issues in schools because they thought that it was about sexuality and forcing sexuality on five-year-olds. And the school board chairperson at the time went into the media and said, "Mr. Chamberlain should be protecting children's innocence, but instead he's raping children's innocence."
He went public with that?
He went public with it.
Isn't that slander?
Yeah, I was a young teacher, though, right? I didn't know. I just knew he was being a real hard ass in the media. So I bought a "Hate is Not a Family Value" bumper sticker and stuck it on my car and drove into Surrey every day. And I was like, "Take that." Um, there were three moms, one from my classroom and two from other schools, who got really upset with this guy and what he was doing to me. So they created a little group called the HEP Moms, H-E-P Moms, Heterosexuals Exposing Paranoia.
Good morning.
Good morning. I'm looking for some salt and pepper shakers, please.
Okay, come on down this way. So this is a really good product right here. It's got a lifetime warranty. It's got a carbon steel grinder. It's gonna last for a long time.
Fantastic. I'll take a sip, please.
Hi, I'm Chris Washington, and I'm the owner of Flandangle's Kitchen and Gifts and Gibson's Fine Linens. We've been servicing the Albany Valley for over forty-two years. We love what we do, and we believe it shows. So come on down and see us today, and we can show you the myriad of things we have in our store.
H-E-P Moms, Heterosexuals Exposing Paranoia.
Oh, wow, cool.
So they went to all the school board meetings, and they would ask him pointed questions, right? About the books and when they were gonna approve these books and blah, blah, blah. And so, he left Surrey. He had a big blowout in the media and left Surrey and said he was being harassed by militant homosexuals. These were all straight moms with husbands. So they started going around saying, "I'm a militant hetero, I'm a militant homosexual."
Whoopie.
Whoopie. So, uh, he, he went to another school district and tried to get elected there and, and was not elected. So, uh, but anyways, the rest of the school trustees were fun, most of them, five of it, the seven of them, were fundamentalist Christians. So they didn't want any of these books or anything on LGBTQ issues in schools at all. And, uh, an organization that I was working with called Gay and Lesbian Educators of B.C., we started it in ninety-one. We had produced a book for counselors on, it was called, I Think I Might Be Gay or Lesbian, bi and trans issues and, uh, the rest of our community wasn't even thought about back then. And so we produced this handbook written by school counselors for other school counselors so that they would be supporting youth who came to, came out to them, and the counselors would know what to do. And so we, we sent it to every school district in British Columbia. And, uh, it was already in Surrey schools. But those fundamentalist trustees found out that it was there, and they banned that as well. They didn't want school counselors even talking to kids. So they were, they were determined to keep any queer content out of schools, no matter what. And for teachers to have no access to it either, as a professional resource. So, they, they were kind of like, um, if you think of like, uh, you know, in the Netherlands, there's a hole in the dike, and there's a cartoon with a kid with his finger in the dike, right? Trying to keep the water from going through. That's kind of their mentality. They thought anything to do with LGBTQ issues coming into schools would poison schools. Basically, that was their stance. So it was very threatening for them. Um, but, uh,
So what was the progression then? You went through three levels of courts?
Yeah, yeah.
And then, what happened?
Well, uh, at the first, first level of court was the B.C., uh, the B.C. Supreme Court. And, uh, we won there. And then at the B.C. Court of Appeal, there's, that's one judge. Then at the B.C. Court of Appeal, there's three judges, and we lost there, and they ruled in favor of the school board. And then, uh, our lawyer said, "If you don't appeal this to this, if we don't try to appeal this to the Supreme Court of Canada, it will set a precedent that school boards can ban books about LGBTQ issues all across the country." So, we went to the, we didn't know if the Supreme Court would even hear the case, right? So, uh, Joe Arve, who was a Victoria lawyer, he was our lawyer. He read, uh, the books in the Supreme Court of Canada, which is a highly unusual way of litigating. Um, and I got other kindergarten teachers in other school districts to read the books. And then they wrote affidavits about the impact on the kids and how much the kids enjoyed the books. The Surrey School Board wrote all these affidavits about how these books would harm children, cause psychological damage, um, confuse them about gender. They said, "These issues should only be discussed at age sixteen or higher, if at all, in schools." And all of the, all of the professional people that we got, all the teachers and educational professionals who wrote affidavits for our side of the court case were all from British Columbia. Theirs were all from, uh, religious schools in the Prairies. And, um, and no, no educators from British Columbia at all. So, when the Supreme Court of Canada looked at it, they could see this, this big divide, right? Of grounded, uh, you know, curriculum-based British Columbia information, and then
Rhetoric.
What, what, you know, what the religious right was basically saying. So, at the Supreme Court of Canada level, they ruled seven to two in our favor. And the Supreme Court of Canada said, "Just because a parent has issues with something that's being taught, doesn't mean that it shouldn't be taught. That's how kids learn, is by learning about something different from themselves." And the little quote the media picked up on was, I, I don't really like the, the, the word tolerance, but they said, "Tolerance is always age-appropriate." And, and kindergarten
You gotta start somewhere.
Kindergarten kids can learn about this topic and should. Um, it was in the curriculum, but nobody was actually actively teaching it and trying to push the envelope. And so, that's basically what I started to do, and
So somehow, through a series of events, you became the face of a movement. You know, what was that part like? Was it, you know, invasive? Did you find it?
It was awkward, because I actually don't like being in the, in the spotlight.
And you're fair you are.
And we thank you.
I'm used to it now, but, uh, I, I didn't like being in the spotlight. And the thing I always had to keep in the back of my head was, "You are a professional twenty-four-seven. So you are always watched. Everything you do and say, you are always watched. And no matter what they, quote-unquote, do to you, you can't lash, lash back at them." So, I received death threats and, you know, I had to have security walk me from school board meetings to my car. I had to look under the, under the car to see if there was a bomb. Like, those were the things in the early, the early years of my teaching. Um, and, uh, and I was warned of that by my union, by my teachers' union, and they were very supportive. But I, but I knew that, uh, my security was at risk to some degree in the early years. But I also had to be super professional. No matter what craziness happened to me, I always, I could never get mad. I could never, like, blow it, because then they would think that I was crazy, right? I was a crazy teacher, right? So I always had to be very, very careful about what I did and said. Um, because in some ways, I was like, holding, holding our community, right? I was holding our, our community's reputation.
Yeah, you were sort of like thrust into the forefront of everything.
Yeah.
And representing an entire community, absolutely.
Which is like very awkward and uncomfortable and not the way it should be because I'm a, a white gay man of privilege, and I don't represent the whole queer community, the whole spectrum of the queer community. But at that time, in nineteen ninety-seven, there were very few positive representations of anybody in our community, anywhere.
So at what point did SOGI come into play with this?
SOGI, SOGI started in about twenty thirteen. After, um, a number of years of work, I worked for the B.C. Teachers' Federation, which is the provincial union. And I worked there for four I worked for the B C Teachers Federation, which is the provincial union, and I worked there for four years, oh, out of the classroom, in an office, helping school boards to develop LGBTQ plus policies to protect teachers to be able to teach and not be harassed. And, um, so during those years, I helped twenty-two school boards develop policy. Some of them were very progressive and some of them, I kind of had to shame them into it a little bit on the phone or behind the scenes and say, you know, such and such district has already done this. Your district is much more progressive, why aren't you on board yet?
There you go.
Um, but it was helping those adults actually, who are supposed to be leaders in education, feel comfortable enough to actually pass the policies and have the conversations. Because they were fearful of parents, they were fearful of backlash. Um, so, so twenty-two policies were put in place in the years that I was working there. And then the person who replaced me, she was there for five years, and so then she got it from twenty-three to forty-six policies. So there's sixty school boards, so we only had sixteen left. And at that point, Soji one, two, three came into place through a philanthropic, um, organization called the ARC Foundation. And they started giving money to the Ministry of Education to fund things as a pilot project. And they had connections to the government in power at the time, and they started to influence politicians when we couldn't. We'd been trying for years with the NDP and the Liberal Government, and they were, just fell flat every time. So we had been advocating since nineteen ninety-six, and it was only till twenty thirteen that the tipping point happened. Um, so it was years and years of work, and then we finally hit the tipping point. So now there's Soji policies in every district in B C. Um, and kids have some degree of protection and some degree of teaching of queer issues. But the implementation varies from district to district.
Well, you said earlier that you consider yourself, because of all of this, you consider yourself an activist. And you had to retire for a while, could you share something a little bit about that?
Yeah, I, I was, um, I saw myself as kind of like the accidental activist. Because I was, I was from a conservative family, we didn't kind of put ourselves out there. But the court case kind of flipped me into all of that. Um, and so I worked on LGBTQ plus issues in education for twenty-five years. Um, we did curriculum development, we wrote lesson plans for teachers, we did professional development workshops for teachers. And when we first started doing that in nineteen ninety-three-ish, I think, um, teachers were scared to even come to the workshops. Uh, they wouldn't, wouldn't write their name down on the registration list because they didn't want somebody to think they were LGBTQ.
Wow.
Um, and we had people who would challenge us in the workshops and yell, yell at us and scream at us, and we're like, uh, every child deserves a safe space to learn. Every child deserves to have their family reality positively reflected back to them. Kids who don't feel safe can't learn to their full academic potential. And the teachers who were really angry with us, they hated those messages, because they were like motherhood, motherhood messages in education.
Yeah.
Hard for them to argue, right?
Yeah, exactly.
Um, so, um, we did years and years of activism outside of the teachers' union and then in the teachers' union. And, um, the combination of both pressure from the outside and the inside created systemic change in schools in B C. Plus, the court case was kind of a cherry on top because it was like, do this, and you're gonna end up in Supreme Court of Canada. So other school boards.
Couldn't you just caption the whole process, like, so you won, what exactly did you win? In the Supreme Court?
One thing we won concretely was that other school boards would never go there. Because, like, would never try to ban books on LGBTQ issues.
Okay.
Because the Surrey School Board had to pay all of their costs, plus our costs. So the Surrey School Board spent more than one point two million dollars to try to keep those books out of schools. That's a lot of taxpayers' money.
Oh, my goodness.
So it was not good P R for them. And other school boards would not want to go there, right? They don't want to go into that kind of litigation drama. Needless, right? And cost, right? So, hmm, and progressive school boards, uh, what it did for them was it was like, we don't want to be like Surrey, oh my god, so let's get going there. Right? So it upped the game for them, right? And the ones that were kind of sitting on the fence, they were like, let's just wait and see, let's wait and see how much changes before we actually have to change. So, um, but it, uh, it was the only court case to this day on LGBTQ issues in education in Canada. So, it had an impact across the nation. Other school boards and other, every province has their own jurisdiction for education, it's not national. So just like healthcare, it's individual provinces. So, um, other, uh, other school districts and other ministries of education used that case to help them create change in different ways.
Breaking news, more and more business owners are looking to grow their business using video ads, and they are not wrong. Let me spell it out for you. Visibility, information, demand, entertainment, and overall impact. That's just some of the things a good video ad can do for your business. Book a free consultation today by clicking on the link below, and let's get started.
That case to help them create change in different ways. So, yeah, it, it had a much bigger impact than I ever intended it to. I just thought I was reading a book to kids and trying to make a.
It all started in a book.
It all started with a book.
About blue dads.
Most revolution, most revolutions start with something small. That's amazing. So, what are you doing now?
Well, I've been retired for three years, uh, living in Naimo, really loving the island, we lived in Vancouver for thirty-one years.
What's not to love in the island?
The island is awesome, and I think we're starting to become islanders. I'm not really sure what it all means yet, but we'll let you know.
Well, yeah, you'll know soon enough.
Um, so, uh, this spring, uh, I started an organization called Island Queers and Allies Who Care. And it's modeled after, uh, a hundred women who care. Um, and that organization is in different communities in British Columbia. And then there's also an organization in Vancouver called A Hundred Gay Men for a Cause. So it's similar to those organizations. So, people donate money, uh, you know, they're paying kindness forward to the queer, to our queer communities. And then, the, the donors decide where that money goes. So, any group or organization who's doing queer-friendly projects or, uh, queer organizations themselves can apply for money, and each quarter, we give money away. So that those organizations can start or grow or thrive. And, uh, it's for Vancouver Island and the Gulf Islands. So, some of our committee members live on Gabriola Island and Victoria, and there's a couple of us in Naimo. And so, it's, it's not got charitable status because it's nonprofit, but we know there's people out there who want to be kind-hearted and do good. And so some people will donate once in a year, some people might donate every quarter. But each quarter, we give money away and the donors decide who that goes to. So the, the organizations apply online. All the information goes online as to who the different groups are, and then the donors vote, and we cut the check. And I have an anonymous donor who's agreed to give two thousand dollars per quarter uh, in matching donations to help us launch ourselves because any organization needs, needs those kind of people to help them be known. Um, and I think it'll take a couple of years maybe before we have, um, charitable status and people know about us and they recognize us by the logo um, and the materials that we have online, so.
And this organization is based in Naimo?
It, well, it's based, it's based in Naimo, but the people on the board are from Victoria, Gabriola, and Gabriola Island and Naimo. So, we get together three times a year, and we meet and chat about where we're at and next steps. We're in communication with each other all the time anyways, but, um, we have three meetings a year, where we're sort of charting the course. Um, so, because I'm relatively new to the island, I don't know which queer organizations and communities there are across the island, so.
Scott knows, he'll give you a tour.
So I, so I encourage anybody to apply for money online.
Alright, so speaking of which, if somebody were interested in donating or applying for some funding, where do they go online?
So the website is islandqueers.ca.
Wonderful.
And, uh, all the information is there, whether they want to, um, donate or whether they want to apply for funding, all the information's there.
And if someone would like to get in touch with you in person and talk about, you know, similar interests and similar issues.
They can just use the generic, our generic email address, which is info@islandqueers.ca, because those emails all come to me.
Okay.
So, yeah, I'm happy to connect with people that way.
Well, thank you very much, James.
Yeah, thanks so much for joining us today. This has been wonderful to hear about, and I'm so excited for your new organization.
Yeah, I could, I have so many other questions, but that'll be offline. Well, thank you for joining us today, we'll catch you next time on Queer View Mirror. I am so inspired and encouraged to know that things have changed and are still being changed. There's a lot to do, there's still a long way to go, but we're gonna get there one of these days.
You're right, it is a real inspiring story, a David and Goliath type story. And what amazes me about the whole thing is the progress that's happened since then and where they want to go.
That's so true, and I'm so glad that the judicial system put one for ours, Dean. It's been such a pleasure being with you today on Queer View Mirror, we'll catch you next time. Well, it's funny you mentioned kindergarten because the story of our guest. What?
Uh, picking it up.
Alright.